Meeting call to order. And we get a roll call.
Dr. Robinson, here with the lift.
Here.
Dr. Buck, here, Mr. Blair, here, Mr. James.
Here. Anything on the agenda need to be changed or had it at this time?
I would like eight point one moved to executive session.
Okay. We move to bigger decision. Anything else not to give doctors of the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
We move to second, all in favor?
Aha.
All right, pass five zero. Public comment?
None.
Recognition and presentation, none? Item number six, approval minutes approved by July sixteen, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes, and approve of July twenty four, twenty twenty four special call. If we get approved. Second, we move to second, all in favor?
Aha.
Pass five zero. Item number seven, approve of. Do you consent item? Approve of consent item?
I move that we approve the consent item.
All right. Move to second, all in favor?
Aha.
All right, pass is five zero, okay. Item number eight, eight point one has been moved to executive session of personnel recognition. So we do eight point two, Mr. Blair.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board, sitting in the chamber, and leader counsel. In front of you is item eight point two, which is the approval of the claims documents and acceptance of financial reports. The danger factors would include the following, the claims documents, all of its dated, July, I think, on the second. Additionally, is July twenty twenty four financial reports, the expenditure budget, and capital projects currently on tax. Also, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. If there aren't any questions, it's a super recommendation that we, that the board trustees approve the appointments and claim documents and assess the five required financial reports. That's presented to the board for the.
I want to watch if we accept the recommendation. Two, two.
Second.
Eighty seven, all in favor?
Aha.
Pass is five zero, eight point three.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board, superintendent, uh, Gray, that guy over there. We're, um, requesting a memorandum of agreement with Cape High Lincoln Community College for the purpose of dual enrollment for the twenty four, twenty five school year. And in line with the, I'm just going to go to increase student achievement, um, resulting in improvements for each school's learning points, grade level proficiency rates, graduation rates, and the school grade designation for A, B, or C. And this is in line, and this is typical code nineteen seventy two to establish a dual enrollment and dual credit programs in high school. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the board of trustees, trustees grant that to high school and file a career and technical center permission to enter a memorandum of agreement with Co- Linn for dual enrollment for the twenty four, twenty five school year for academic and career and technical courses. And we're actually, um, trying to add the welding piece for the, uh, career and technical.
I want to ask a question for a two point. Is the fee still the same, the amount that we have to pay per student? And what would be the difference, if any, uh, are different as relates to the number of students we expect to have in the world?
Um, to my knowledge, the fee is the same. Um, we are expecting an increase because we're adding the welding fees. Um, traditionally, we just done the academic courses, but we have, um, met with Co-Lin and we're able to add, and right now we have like seventeen students who are interested and who have signed up, uh, for the welding piece.
For the welding piece.
Yes, they can be from seven thirty in the morning to eight thirty in the morning, and they will provide transportation to get the students back to campus.
I'm. Example, is the number based on the student?
No, sir, we've been very, very, uh, strategic in looking at those numbers. Uh, when Ms. Jackson comes in, up, up for the next, uh, MOU, there is an increase that we have for fees for students, uh, at the early college. So she and I have been talking since, uh, early spring about our number. So, right, sir, that we're in alignment with our budget.
The, the fee adds a percent.
The fee, I, I have to check out, we have to get an MOU for the fees for your program, for her. It's the eleventh and twelfth grade students who are taking, they're on the more collegiate side than the high school side. There's, there's an increase.
Okay. Is, is there money for the welding?
Yes, yes.
From the workforce, yeah.
But the overall numbers other than the welding.
Are consistent.
Are basically the same.
They're consistent. We have an actual decrease at early college.
Because I, I mean, it's my, I'm under the impression that a number of people in years past have tried to be a part of the program, and we have kept that number basically the same.
We typically for the early college cap, that fifty students per grade limit, which is two hundred students overall, we are below that number.
Thank you.
Okay.
We need to have them.
I, I move that we accept them in a, of agreement. I mean, I just have a student and Co-Lin.
I second.
Okay. We move to second, all in favor? Pass is five zero, eight point four.
Well, since we're all saying things, fees.
It's called a B, yeah. Protect the earth, how's that?
Yeah. So we need to have take a separate action.
Yes.
Yeah.
Out of emotion, if we approve item number eight point two.
You getting in there? This is where you getting there?
I thought we just did eight point nine.
You did eight point three, which is high school, this is eight point four for fees for early college.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, that's.
Yes, yes, sir. Okay, Mr. James, members of the board, Ms. McDonald Green, um, eight point four requesting interim memorandum of understanding between NASTAS School District and Co-Lin for tuition and fees for NASTAS Early College at Co-Lin for the twenty four, twenty five school year. And this is in alignment with the district's goal to increase student achievement resulting in improvement for each student's learning gains, grade level proficiency rates, and graduation rates. It is a recommendation of the superintendent that the board of trustees approve this memorandum of agreement between NASD and Co-Lin for NASTAS Early College at Co-Lin for the twenty four, twenty five school year.
Second.
And just for informational purposes, for ninth and tenth grade students who are enrolled at early college, the fee remains the same as this past, uh, school year at a hundred and twenty five dollars for that course. And I think they take one course each year?
Yes, one course.
Uh, if they take a one hour course, it's forty dollars, that remains consistent. For eleventh and twelfth graders, that has been a ten dollar increase over the last year. Last year, the fee was one hundred and seventy five dollars per three hour course. This year is one hundred and eighty five dollars per three hour course.
And how many students do we have at NASTAS Early College?
Uh, approximately one eighty, one eighty five, so like she said, we did, we do have a de- uh, decrease in our enrollment this year, which will kind of offset the, to call.
Is Dr. Perry Goodwin, is he the solicitor vice president?
Yes, sir.
So he's president of this camp?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Perry, Perry Neil.
Sure, hell, yes. You got that? Thank you. I pulled it back. All in favor? All right. Yeah. All right. Eight point six, no, eight point five.
Eight point five, Mr. James, members of the board. I am pleased to present, uh, this item. It is the approval and acceptance of funds for the Mary Sprayberry Nurse Program Grant. The NASTAS School District has been awarded four hundred and twenty five thousand dollar grant fund to secure another nurse in the district.
You say Sprayberry or is it Popberry?
Sprayberry.
Okay, so just wrong.
Yeah, it's Sprayberry.
And the juice.
Yeah, it's, uh, Mary Kirk, Kirk Patrick Pascal, Mary Sprayberry School Nurse Grant, uh, four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. This, uh, the nurse will be designated for Mac Lawren and West. This agreement is over several years, from, uh, school year twenty five this year through fiscal year twenty twenty nine, eighty five thousand dollars. So it is my recommendation that we, the board accepts this grant.
I move that we accept this grant, second.
We move to second, all in favor?
Aha.
Pass is five zero.
Who owes to our grant lawyer?
Sprayberry.
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 That's Popberry.
Red Davis.
I got you.
Think about when it's part of the grant. That was when I called it. Okay. Eight point six. I live there.
July, that's this, not here? Okay, I'll present, boy, uh. This is, um, a recommendation that the board approves the twenty four, twenty five agreement between NASD and Hill Creek. As you're aware, when we have students who are in the, under the I, IDEA umbrella, and they have, um, behaviors beyond what we can manage, uh, in this district, then we do work in partnership with Hill Creek Schools to provide services for students there. And so this is the, uh, annual agreement to enter to our partnership.
So.
Second, we move to second, all in favor? All right, pass. Okay, eight point seven?
Eight point seven is, uh, recommendation that the board approves two facility use, uh, requests. One is for the Alpha Alpha Sorority for the NASTAS High School, J- NASTAS High School Cafeteria, Gym, and Classes, they are hosting a teen summit. And a, uh, request for the NASTAS Cowboys to use the NASTAS High School football field. And this has been an annual agreement that we entered into for that organization. There, you football.
So I think, why they, why they got to?
Yes.
Yeah, why they got to use that?
They always do it.
They can use the Washington building, not. Move it to the Washington. They gotta have it.
We're the whole room, you just.
But if we walk in, we'll be bringing.
Oh, come on, hold on.
You better have it.
You have a conflict with them?
Oh, I didn't thought of that. I mean, I move that we, uh, presently use the settlement piece.
For A and B?
For A and B.
I'll say.
We move to second, all in favor? All right, pass is five zero, eight point eight.
Eight point eight, Mr. James, I request that we, uh, table it. I, I have not had an opportunity to review the submission yet.
Don't have a name, eight point nine, that's. Eight point ten.
Mr. James, members of the board, requesting out of state travel for the NASTAS School Football Team. Uh, they play Hancock on office thirty, they have to go through Hammond to get there, so, uh, that's where they will, uh, stop and eat. So just requesting out of state, uh, travel for that trip.
So how much is the trip? The last year was eight thousand, so how much is the trip?
It's gonna be regular price, they going on Big Yeller.
Okay, and I see you got overnight travel, so they gonna spend the night?
No, no, it's out of state.
That's the opposite.
Okay. But it's not in Hammond, you just eat in Hammond.
Yeah, they have to go through Hammond to get to Hancock, so they're, they're gonna stop and eat in Hammond.
Out of emotion, we accept the recommendation of, uh, athletic director and, uh, slash operation director, slash, slash entertainer.
I'll second.
Slash facilities. I didn't want to go down the over business, we asked for a rate.
So all in favor? Now we have, I'm a straight thirty day candidate.
Mr. James, members of the board, just have, uh, in your pocket for certain, they reviewed the Booster Club guidelines and substitute teachers manual.
Okay. Nine point two.
Good evening, Mr. James, members of the board, Ms. McDonald Green. Before you have recorded safety report from April two thousand twenty four to June, there are any questions?
Thank you.
Nine point three.
Ms. Butler?
She said something on the audio.
Nine point three is, um, your, make Ms. Butler step down. Is your update for S R three, you know the S R three, uh, clip is low. We're working diligently to make certain you take your eye attention. We'll discuss that matter.
Okay, yes. And I just want to say that I did see a report in yesterday's paper, uh, regarding the state of Mississippi. And I believe it said, they indicated that they've got four hundred and forty two million dollars of the one point five billion dollars that the state received that hadn't been used up yet. And they listed the top four, uh, school districts that spent all their money. And they listed four who had, who sold little, so I was glad to see we won one of those four that had spent, uh, so much money, whatever. But in any case, they, they're gonna ask for a waiver, don't know if that waiver is gonna be granted, uh, to extend that deadline, but we can't count on it, we gotta just, you know, diligently get done what we, we're trying to get done so we can have our funds obligated. And we won't be in a situation where we would have to be returning any of those federal dollars. Because we need to use them.
Ms. Butler and her team have been working so diligently, she is not even quoting numbers anymore. She didn't quote, uh, accountability centers anymore, she's just working on numbers.
Oh, okay.
She quoted battles.
Might be extended.
They're gonna ask the, according to this article, but they're gonna ask the federal government if they can have it extended, uh, that time. But we can't depend on that because, but at least it was good for me to see in this particular article that the chairman of education on both the senate side and the house side, I believe it was, indicated that they thought a lot of these funds contributed to Mississippi being upgraded, uh, academically in terms of what our schools have been over the last couple of years because the funds were used for tutoring and all these other kinds of things that they, that they allow. So that tells me that at least the mindset to a certain extent has changed based on the fact that they gave teachers a raise, you know, a couple of years ago, or whatever the case may be. And they're recognizing that the more resources you have, the more opportunity you have to benefit all of the kids and, and to that kind of thing.
Glory me.
Right, and these both of them were benefits, okay?
Yes.
That, that, that were.
Funding education has good results.
That's correct.
And there are actually two things, if I may interject. Actually, um, they're asking for, um, a waiver or an extension, especially for the construction component until February twenty twenty six. Additionally, um, today I received correspondence from, um, Dr. Judy Nelson Stateville Program Director. They're going to also ask the, uh, United States Department of Education, I'm sorry, I ran down here. Neither device has sounded, I don't know, but anyway, there is additional ARP S R money. And they're going to ask if, um, that money, um, can be, uh, distributed, uh, to districts. And, um, and they asked us to, um, complete a survey and, uh, madam superintendent, I checked, yes. So I made two good things as, as far as that ARP S R money.
Right, well, I appreciate you, uh, setting them in on the, I, I have been dotted and the team being probably.
We have.
But that, but that's good information, full of information in addition to what I said.
Okay. Nine point four is the whole calendar, but we have more, uh. Anything you'd be able to take away off of it, give it to Ms. Davis? Nine point five, she's been standing up there.
Nine point five, Mr. James, members of the board, um, there is a, uh, we are, Ms. Butler and Officer Davis have been working on securing grant funding to replace exterior doors at our elementary school. And so, um, we are interested in initiating the RFP process so that we can start securing bids for those particular projects. We just want to make sure, as you're aware, we have, uh, aged facilities, uh, and we want to update, uh, those exterior doors in hardware because it's very difficult to find replacement for those, uh, doors when there, there's a need for repairs.
Would, would the doors fall under the S, well, could you last some of that function?
Yes, yes. Okay. Elementary renovations, we are still, uh, uh, they're still in the process of renovating those buildings. Uh, we knew that the cosmetically, those buildings would not be as pretty and nice as we would hope they would be at the start of school, but I would like to applaud, we would like to applaud the custodial teams at Mac Lawren, well, all of the elementary, all of the elementary schools. Those teams worked overtime to make certain, literally, to make certain that our buildings were in a condition that was acceptable for our students, again, not perfect, but in a position that we could open school and have school without issue, our concerns about student or staff safety. So they're continuing that process. Uh, we are, the contractors are pushing forward, again, we're still having delays with receiving air conditions. I believe they started moving in last week, coming in last week, some of the, uh, air conditions that we needed. So we're still in that process. We are looking hopeful for completion of September. Uh, it may move into October, but our contractors have provided to Mrs. Butler, uh, the justification letter to submit to the Mississippi Department of Education regarding those shipping delays. Uh, in, uh, last week's board updates, I provided you some information about our child nutrition program. As you know, for the last several years, uh, we have been a, um, CEP recipient, meaning that all of our students have been afforded the opportunity to receive child nutrition, lunches, and breakfast without fee and without having to complete, uh, lunch applications. That is not the case this year, this is a recertification year for our district because of a decrease in numbers of students identifying, uh, identified as eligible for staff benefits. It was necessary for us to, uh, have parents or families to complete lunch applications for this year, meal applications. That is going to help us offset, uh, a decrease in funding that would have occurred if we had not gone through this process.
What, what is saying to anticipate and follow in that gap?
So in twenty nineteen, sixty seven percent of our students were eligible. According to their, their calculations, we moved from sixty seven percent to forty four percent of our students. So what the application does is allows, allows us to identify those students who have not been identified. Because we know for our population of students, that was not that significant of a, of a decrease. However, uh, we have to make certain, we have to gather this information from families in order to move that needle up.
So have the applicants, the graduated, we stay out?
Yes, ma'am, applications were sent home two weeks ago. Two weeks ago.
What was it based on to make that calculation?
They have some type of process that they identify. So they have our roster of students.
I bet it was on property assessment.
And also those students who identify who are on our MCIS roster, on our enrollment roster, comparing that, that to the, the tenant, probably the tenant we is making that comparison to see how many students are actually captured there. Um, facilities, we were able to prepare, uh, repair three major water leaks. We have two more. So today that was reported water leak at NASTAS Special McCavity, that same area?
Is that the water leak that's outside?
Yes, sir.
So it had been.
It was repaired.
That's what I thought.
Remember that, the, the, the track, the, the hole was still open, you mentioned as to why we left it open?
I figured you waited to get it.
They left it open to determine whether or not it was going to break again, so they would have to go back and deep, you know, break the con- concrete up again. So we did have an issue today that they are working to repair. And also that was a water leak at NASTAS Mill School in that courtyard, we have to address.
Let me ask you, the one that I saw, I saw some city workers, they have been in the water leak at the high school.
So there was a break in the, right there at the, the main line that our workers addressed the actual break in the line, but there is some work that the city made to do. Yeah, and if I'm not mistaken, it's still open in case there's an issue there, doing to make certain that they monitor that.
So would we need to expend any of our funds in order to have it completely corrected?
Yes. That was on us.
So would that be a part of what the contractor disposed to do?
We're, we're beyond that point, we're beyond that time frame. And we'll talk about a little bit more some other situations.
Okay.
Uh, the homecoming committee? Or, or we will, uh, emergency management on tomorrow to discuss our plans for homecoming, uh, October the eleventh, twenty twenty four, just to make certain that we continue to have a fair, friendly, uh, and safe environment for our homecoming celebration.
Emergency man?
Yes, sir.
I don't quite understand, but, but I guess.
We had a large turnout last year, and we were anticipating a larger turnout this year. And so we want to make certain that we have, we make certain that we're gonna continue to remain safe. So they're gonna provide for us lighting, they're gonna provide for us additional security, uh, suggestion.
Emergency management, what are you doing there?
Emergency, emergency management, local law enforcement.
Oh, okay.
I just put it all, let's say first responders.
Okay.
And we are working with emergency management as we play home. Uh, I did provide for you all a copy of the letter from, uh, Congressman Johnson, uh, thanking us for the invitation to, um, complication. That was a part of your board update last week.
I did share with him individual thanks, individual thanks from the president.
Thank you, Mr. Wes.
Him too.
Thank you, Mr. Wes. Okay. That's all I have for, um, oversight.
Okay. Any board members have anything, Dr. Robinson?
Thank you.
Mr. Wes?
No, sir. I do want to say, uh, Al Coman's High School Day is, um, September the fourteenth. And we will be hosting Mr. and Miss NASTAS High, Mr. and Miss Port Gibson, Mr. and Miss Fayette, and Mr. and Miss Warren Central and Fixburg High. So come out and support your students. Go bright.
Mr. James, please forgive me, uh, my oversight. Uh, administrators were invited to today's board meeting. You will see them routinely, uh, in board meetings, uh, throughout this school year. So I want to make certain that the board is aware of who is in the room today. We have Mr. Hayes Harris, who is interim principal at NASTAS Mill School. Dr. Tony Martin, who is principal at Morgantown Elementary. Um, Mrs. Angela Reynolds, principal of NASTAS High School. Dr. Latoya Scott Harris, principal at West. Ms. Carolyn Jackson, principal at NASTAS Early College. Mr. Cooper and NASTAS Options Academy. Let me tell you, Options Academy is a different place. It's a different place. It's, that's a good thing. It's a good thing, it's a good thing. We have, this, uh, Shalonda White, who is assistant principal at Morgantown. And we have this, uh, Risha Mann, who is student improvement. So I appreciate them being in the audience on today. I'm sorry, who's on?
Ms. Taylor.
Ms. Brown Taylor, uh, who is online. She's the principal at Mac Lawren. And I can say that. Okay.
All right.
Ms. Walton is on.
I'm sorry, Ms. Naomi Walton is online, assistant principal at NASTAS High School.
Okay. Out of emotion, we have a total determination.
Second.
Did you ask the who?
Administrator. There's some information to be presented to the board.
Out of emotion, we go to the executive session to discuss personnel and litigation.